Gentlemen, being that we have the board all on board this morning and it's past eight thirty, the chair will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody to this board meeting. The weather is great out there, isn't it? Lot of snow. Yeah, it took me three hours to get over here this morning. But as a guide, you know, we were enjoying the snow. With that, gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call the board meeting to order at this time. The way we usually do it is we start off with the prayer and then we go ahead and do our pledge of allegiance and then go into the business that is before us as a board. So this morning, Chief Eager is going to do our prayer and then Superintendent Williams is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet here together as leadership for this county. We're grateful, Father, for the snow that has fallen and for the blessing that it is to our lands and to our people. We pray that Thou will bless those that travel today and those that are in those elements to be able to work safely and to take care of themselves and their families. We pray that Thou will bless us today as we discuss issues of importance to Apache County and the citizens that live here, that we will be guided and directed by Thy Spirit, that we can take into consideration all those that will be affected. We're grateful again, Father, for the opportunity to be here for the safety that we've had to get here, and we pray for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
At ye pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Eager and Superintendent Williams, for the prayer and the pledge. So with that, gentlemen, let's go ahead and go into the business before us. I'm going to go ahead and call the Public Health Services District to order at this time. Item number one.
Good morning, Chairman Shirley.
Morning.
Supervisor Shepard and Supervisor Sims Hauser. Apache County Public Health Services District requests discussion and possible approval of STD Control Services IGA CTR 0404-478, beginning January first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of six thousand thirty-six dollars. This is a five-year grant. It's been ongoing with, county has had this grant for a number of years, at least fifteen and more than that.
Okay, gentlemen, there you have it. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the item as presented. Are there any discussion questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, three in favor, it's unanimous that we go ahead and go with it as presented. Item number two, sir.
We request discussion and possible approval of the agreement for clinical practicum and/or externship internship education, number four-one-four-one with Northern Arizona University. The purpose of this agreement is to establish a relationship between the university and the health department to allow students from the university to participate in clinical practicum and/or externship internship program approved by the university and conducted at the facility, which is the health department. We have a county resident who's a student at NEU who's interested in doing an internship with the health department.
Okay, gentlemen, your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous that we go ahead and approve the item as presented. Item number three, sir.
We request your discussion and possible approval of IGA ADHS sixteen dash zero-nine-seven-nine-six-zero, Healthy People, Healthy Communities Amendment, number four.
Okay, gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous that we go ahead and go with the item as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, gentlemen, the chair entertains a motion to adjourn the Public Health Services District meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, with that, the Public Health Services District meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, gentlemen, go ahead and call the county's library district meeting to order at this time. We do have two items. Item number one.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Morning.
Discussion and possible approval to accept state grant and aid in the amount of twenty-five-thousand dollars. This is an ongoing grant from the Arizona State Library. The matching funds are met through regular expenditures.
Good gentlemen?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Item number two.
Discussion and possible approval of the completed strategic plan for the Concho Public Library.
Good gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors.
Chairman, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the library district meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous that we go ahead and do this. So with that, the library district meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, gentlemen, let's go ahead and call the county board of supervisors meeting to order at this time. Item number one.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors.
Morning, and I forget, gentlemen, Mr. Patterson, Mr. Hwining, do we call for a motion to go into public hearing or does the chair just call the public hearing?
We do a motion.
Okay, gentlemen, we need a motion to go into a public hearing mode.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go ahead and go into a public hearing mode on this particular item. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so with that, sir, we're in a public hearing mode. Maybe you can go ahead and do your presentation and then we'll go ahead and open up the floor for any questions or discussion.
Okay, thanks. I'll read the agenda item first. It says, following a public hearing, discussion and possible approval of proposed amendments to the Apache County Building Safety Ordinance, along with the fee schedule and valuation data used for building permits. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of these changes on December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and these proposed changes were on the, were posted on the county website. As I put in my staff report, the main change for the building ordinance is adding rules for tiny houses. It's relaxing some of the safety rules for tiny houses because tiny houses don't have the same safety needs as larger homes. So one example is, in a home, you're supposed to have at least seven-foot ceiling heights. Tiny houses sometimes have lower than that, but because it's such easy access to get out in the event of a fire, things like that, we're relaxing the rules on that. And the next main change is just updating and clarifying our fee schedule. There were a couple of parts that were confusing on the fee schedule. We also added some flat fees for our most, some of our most common services, such as solar permits, just make it a flat fee so we don't have to evaluate those permits. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Ladies, gentlemen, we were in a public hearing mode on this particular item. I don't know if there's anyone here wanting to come before the board to address this particular item or ask any questions. So the floor is now open. Any one wanting to come forward? Gentlemen, looks like we don't have anyone wanting to address this particular item from the floor. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this particular item at this time.
Move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to close the public hearing on this particular item. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, so with that, the public hearing is hereby closed on this particular item. Now, going into the action item, what do you guys want to do, gentlemen? What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
All second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve this particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so it's unanimous that we go ahead and approve this particular item as presented. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number two, Mr. Patterson.
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, good morning. This item is the consent agenda and consists of items A through C, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Don Yarge from the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer's Office would like to discuss the possible approval and certificate of removal of abatement of taxes pursuant to ARS four-two-one-eight-three-five-one-one. The total tax to be abated is nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Total interest to be abated is seven hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. For the total fees to be abated of thirty-five dollars, for a total abatement of one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. A list of parcels included in the, included in the abatement are available in the Treasurer's Office or in the agenda backup material on the county website.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Mr. Williams, item number four.
Happy New Year, Supervisors. It's nice to welcome in this beautiful white snow and
Happy New Year.
And we need the moisture and pray for that every time.
That's right.
We have two items to bring to you today, sir, board members. We have, one is an approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County Superintendent of Schools for the educational services provided to juveniles that are being detained, the Apache County youth that are being detained at the Pinal County Juvenile Detention Center.
Okay, gentlemen, your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Item number five.
This item is a renewal of a, this is the third year of a program from the governor's office for peer-parent substance abuse programming. We target three year, three school districts, three middle schools, in fact, in Apache County, and we're targeting this year to continue with the Kachin Lee School District as one and Gennado School District and Sanders. We're still pending approval from those folks. This is a request to allow us to continue that program for another year through the governor's office.
Gentlemen, your wishes?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item number six, Chief Eager.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
The Sheriff's Office requests discussion and possible approval of an amendment to the Drug, Gang and Violent Crime Control Grant, number DC one-nine-zero-zero-one, that was previously approved on the August sixth Board of Supervisors meeting. These are some adjustments made by ACJC to the grant that we need to get approved so that we can get the grant funding.
Okay, gentlemen?
Move.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear two ayes out there?
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. With that, it's unanimous that we go ahead and go with the particular item as presented, sir. Okay, item number seven.
Sheriff's Office requests discussion and possible approval to award bid number two-zero-one-nine-zero-two for the purchase and installation of a new roof for the jail and sheriff's office building to Quality First Roofing in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Quality First Roofing is the low bidder and they have been the most interactive with our office in providing us details and the ability to come and do the roof in a timely manner. We have a lot of leaks inside our building as the membrane on the roof is thirty years old and it's something that we are in dire need of. We request approval.
Gentlemen?
Move to approve. Second, question?
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shepard, question?
Thank you. Just gonna, was just gonna ask for a quick summary of the three. I know that they all came in, two of them came pretty low with their percentage of overhead. They kind of fit in the same range, but as far as, because a lot of times, you know, we go with the lowest bidder, but we don't get the quality and we're always running through issues. I don't know if that was discussed in, in some of your discussions with the three bidders and going forward. The other is, just analysis, I'm being told that we put about two and a half million to the detention. The feasibility of it, with the shortage of funds that come in, is there the likelihood that, you know, the sheriff's office can, is in the process or could process the jail out to save county two point five million dollars in operation costs? I know that the other counties are facing such and have talked about, you know, contracting with nearby counties for jail services. And just looking at the long run, and that was my discussion, my question is that we fixed the roof, but yet next year we closed out the jail and contracted out, kind of like we're throwing money where, but I also understand the priority and the needs of trying to get the roof leaks done because of the amount of snow we have, rainfall that we have and the possible development of mold and such. And so I just have those, those few questions in moving forward with the, with the votes.
Okay, Chief Eager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Shepard, the bid, it was, all things were taken into consideration. Quality First provided us the most, their bid at first was for the thickest membrane that's available. We had other bids that came, the other companies that we talked to that had a thinner membrane and the warranty on it was not as long. And like I said at first, the interaction with Quality First Roofing has been great throughout, which leads us to believe that they will be cognizant of all of our concerns and timeline. So we did take all those things into consideration, not just accepting the low bid, and I appreciate that, that question. And on the second, second part, the funding part, we are working currently to try to get into our facility DUI, extreme DUI prisoners that previously would have had to go to DOC. The bill was passed last year to allow that, so we're trying to find additional ways to bring funding in. We're still working with our federal partners, trying to get federal prisoners returned. So we're, we're doing what we can to try to bring additional funding into the jail district as the district, as it is now structured, does not of the, of the, of the jail. So we are working on that and we will continue to do so. The issues with contracting out is the amount of transportation, the amount of, we would still have to pay medical, transportation and housing to any other facility and transportation back for court and all those things is a major consideration. So the, there are still talks throughout the state because there are counties that are in a worse situation than we are with their, with their jail. So we are still working on that, sir, and we will continue to do so, try to find the best solution for the people of our county.
Good, thank you, Chief.
Follow-up question, Chair?
Mr. Shepard?
Thank you. I know within the last, since I've been on, been on the board of supervisors, the sheriff's office has been going over into red on average about four hundred thousand a year. I think this is the only program that I recall that goes over into red and we have to cover the costs and I do understand that there is a priority that law enforcement is needed. I guess just working through the half, half of this year, I know this is coming out of the contingency fund, but at the same time, looking at the number of dollars we've kind of went over and adds up to about maybe a million dollars extra for the sheriff's office. I don't know if there's a plan within the sheriff's office to, I guess, be a little bit more fiduciary when it comes to not going over into red. Once we allow one program, I feel like other programs will probably do such and again goes back to, you know, we have a contingency fund, but that's what it's there for. But at the same time, I know that there's things that can be curtailed or at least, you know, looked at from fiduciary.
Good chief response?
Yes, we have been over budget for several years. We've worked with county manager's office to get into budget the actual expenditures that is based on expenditures of the previous five years. There are several issues there. One is, in the past, we have not been able to budget overtime. Overtime for law enforcement is going to happen, so working with county manager, we've implemented some of those changes into this budget and we should be a whole lot closer barring a, any major incidents and expenses that are incurred due to the nature of our business.
Good gentlemen, any more questions or discussion? We do have a motion. Okay, if there's any more, if there's no more questions or discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and go with the particular item as presented. Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, item number eight.
Chairman, members of the board, Engineers Department requests discussion and possible approval to lease purchase
Lease purchase.
One Caterpillar one-twenty M two motor grader for District Three at a cost of twenty-one-thousand, four-fifty-two-sixty per year for seven years, using National Intergovernmental Purchasing Agreement and City of Tucson contract, and we request approval. Thank you.
Good gentlemen?
Motion, question?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve that particular item. Mr. Shepard, question?
Yes, I know we've been in lease purchasing for the last year, two years, at least a year, but something I've noticed on there, I don't know if there's anything, I guess this goes back to our county engineer and also the considers that in the last year there's a large amount of balloon payments. And so the more I see going into lease purchases and how do we address that? I guess that's another question I have for our county manager. When all these contracts comes up, then there's a cumulative of, I think it was about a little less, little over fifty thousand per grader that's out there. I don't know if that's been talked about, maybe in going forward, we can just disperse evenly the amount so that we're not dealing with such a large amount of balloon payments at the end.
Okay, Mr. Patterson?
Chairman, Supervisor Shepard, yes, there is, there's, each time we go out for a lease, there's opportunity to, to adjust those leases in the way we would like to have them. Over the last several, we have chosen to have a balloon payment at the end instead of just a one-dollar payout, however, we have done that, that process also. It normally depends on our financial situation at the time, and so as we look at budgets and what they look like over the next three to four years, we can begin to adjust those leases based on the money we believe is coming in as far as revenue is concerned. And so if, if it is District Two's desire in the future to, to have a one-dollar buyout at the end of their leases, we can definitely look at that and we'll work with the county Engineers Office to get that taken care of.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just kind of take note of that, and I know this is seven years down the road. Maybe in preparations for the balloon payment, we need to make sure that we do have enough set aside to cover these going forward, but I will definitely look at any of my contracts going forward with that one dollar, just to be, not putting a burden, seven years down the road. It'd be easier just to, you know, go straight out seven years. That way I'm not asking people to put money aside and doing that within my own budget. So just wanted to kind of mention that, so we're all prepared for it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number nine. Aye, Mr. Sandoval?
Good morning, Chairman, honorable members of the board. As the agenda reads, item number nine, discussion, District One, discussion and possible approval of professional service contract with Mr. Clinton Jim to facilitate a BIA clearance process for the Crezo Quarry pit. Contract is not to exceed six thousand per the contract bid, and we'd be looking at this consultant to get the paperwork through the Bureau of Indian Affairs process, as it's already been through the Navajo Nation process, and it was a very long process, so we want to rush get it through as ASAP. That's what's before us.
Okay, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Just second with a comment.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shepard, comment?
I understand it went through the Navajo Nation process, but the BIA process is quite simple and I don't know, again, we have staff in District One, District Two that understand the BIA process and instead of contracting out, I don't know if that was looked at as far as, you know, trying to reserve some, some funding. We all know the BIA process and going forward and making sure that things get done quickly. And so I just had that commented. And so, just had that commented as well. So, but again, each of us have our own budget and our own process going forward. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're not recreating, because I see some other agenda items that are duplication of county services, and we're just, you know, increasing pay and stuff like that. But in this particular item, I don't know what the length will be or what the issues are with BIA.
Good, thank you, sir. We had the toughest time trying to get this thing through the, the nation's processes. And now, we're trying to get the processes expedited with the BIA. What we've found out, talking to some of the other people that are trying to get the paperwork through the BIA processes, there's, there's a long line, a long list, and it's taken anywhere from eight months to a year to process paperwork at this time with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. So, we're trying to bring in an expert to try to get through the, the processes ASAP. And I believe that we can do this. So, we're wanting to expend some monies to, to do just that. But otherwise, I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Shepard. Gentlemen, I don't know, I don't know if there's any more questions. Otherwise, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. All those, so it's unanimous that we go ahead and approve the particular item as presented. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Okay, item number 10.
Morning, Chairman, Members of the Board.
Morning.
Item 10 is discussion and possible approval to award bid number 201901 for the purchase of construction water in the Hunt Valley area.
Okay, gentlemen?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and approve the particular item as presented. Item number 11?
Item 11 is discussion and possible approval, I'm sorry, of professional services agreement between District Three and Veritas Research Consulting, LTD.
Good gentleman?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, questions?
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shepard, question?
Um, just reviewing some of the documents that were attached, I'm, I'm reading it's just for District Three. However, we do have several chapters here north of I-40 that are within District Three. And also, how does this correlate with Mr. Greco and the environmental part of it? And how will the contractor be working with our currently, current new elected state reps and state senator as it comes to state issues and how, you know, I'm not sure how it's going to be built in. I know it's for District Three, but I do have some folks that live down, down on the chapter area. Kind of quite some concern how that's going to work and how it works with the current contract we have with Mr. Greco.
Right, sir. And this is specific to District Three. The contractor be providing more assistance and coordination and resource planning, separate of what Mr. Greco is doing, as Mr. Greco's doing that work for the entire county. Some of the work that I used to do researching and facilitating grants, we would give to this contractor to help with that, you know, as directed by myself and District Three Supervisor. It also include the research on legislative actions that are coming down from the federal government and the state. But the interaction between those state and federal officials would come through myself and the District Three Supervisor.
Okay, Mr. Shepard, I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're all going forward together. Certainly, I guess, the contractors, Mr. Shamley, and just my personal notifications and dealing with him last year, wasn't quite happy with some of the stuff that were put on there, and I got thrown around on the bus. But anyway, certainly, you know, it's for District Three, and I just want to make sure that we're all working together going forward, and, you know, making sure that we're all doing what we're supposed to without making any hindrance with, especially with contract we have with, with Mr. Greco.
I understand your concern, and we would make sure that Mr. Shamley's not interacting in, in, you know, certain roles with county departments. That interaction would be with our office under my direction.
Okay. I don't know if there are any more questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we do have a motion on, on this particular item. So, given that, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. So, the particular items hereby approved. Item number 12?
Item 12 is discussion and possible approval of the reorganization of the District Three Supervisor's Office as follows. We are eliminating a part-time administrative coordinator, range 38, the economic development director, range 60, hazardous fuels mitigation manager, range 58, and field operations manager, range 50. We'd like to create the following positions, Division Manager of Health, Safety, and Environmental, range 55, Division Manager of Special Projects, range 58, and a Division Manager of Technical Services, range 55. And the restructure does not affect our current budget.
Okay, gentlemen?
Motion with questions? Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shepard, question?
Thank you. I do want to commend Mr. Sims Hauser. He's trying to bring me back to last year. You know, when I first came in and had certain great ideas in restructuring, and was very disappointed on what happened. And of course, I was asked to wait until we get the salary study done. But these new positions, I don't know, since then, we were trying to approach it comprehensively. These are brand-new titles and job descriptions that are high in the range, and we're actually, and I don't know if we're duplicating some of the services, like the environmental part of it. I know there's, we have risk management. We have planners that are titled in, in our, in our job description across the counties. And it kind of seems like it takes in more, some of those. But again, I'm not going to stand in front of, you know, the supervisors that have great ideas like this and trying to realign, restructure, and actually get what needs to get done with them. So, I just want to commend Mr. Sims Hauser for, for doing such. Certainly, this doesn't really fit within my district, but certainly, it fits, I think, within your district to move forward. And so, again, I just want to commend you for doing that and continuing to, to move us forward in that, in such as, as a county as a whole. So, I just want to express my appreciation, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, gentlemen, if there are no other questions or discussion, we do have a motion. Given that, I'll go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and approve the particular item as presented. Thank you. Okay, item number 13?
This is discussion and possible approval of grant contract WFHF 18-202, a wildland fire hazardous fuels agreement between Department of Forestry and Fire Management and Apache County for fuels reduction in Vernon.
Good gentleman?
The motion, Chair, second?
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 14, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes, good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Item 14 is discussion and possible approval to adjust the salaries of the justices of the peace in accordance with ARS 22-125. That information and those changes have been provided to the supervisors, and we recommend approval.
Good gentleman?
Motion to approve. A second?
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Okay, item number 15, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Chairman, Members of the Board, this is discussion and possible appointment of the, of a member of the Board of Supervisors to serve as the County Supervisors Association's Legislative Policy Committee for 2019. This is for the CSA and the LPC position.
Okay, gentlemen, recommendations? Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to keep Member Shepard in there?
Okay, motion to continue with Mr. Alton Shepard, representing the board on the Legislative Policy Committee of CSA. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Mr. Shepard, is that okay?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Shepard?
I'm having a little technical difficulty. Every time we vote, I put it on mute. And so, I was trying to talk when it was on mute. But I, again, I do accept, and I've learned a lot, and it's very quite informative and priority to be at the table down, down in Phoenix when we have CSA. So, I do appreciate the continuance nomination.
Okay. Now, we do have a motion and a second on the particular item with the recommendation that you continue to serve as the LPC committee member, Mr. Shepard. So, given that, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. So, it's unanimous that we go ahead and do that, to have Mr. Shepard continue to represent the board on the CSA's Legislative Policy Committee. Okay, Mr. Patterson, item number 16?
Yes, Chairman, Members of the Board, this is discussion and possible approval to solicit bids for publication services. This is, again, just to be able to solicit those bids, and we bring those back to the board. And we'd recommend approval.
Gentlemen?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Item number 17, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, discussion and possible approval to create a public information office position. This position was, was asked for by the board in the last meeting, and we've gone ahead and put together that information for you, and we'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Okay, item number 18, Mr. Whiting?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, item 18, the County Attorney's Office, discussion and possible approval to appoint the Arizona Attorney General's Office to represent Apache County in case TX 2018 0000920. It's a tax case regarding centrally valued property, specifically, it's the Transwestern Pipeline. We've been working on this for about three years, each year with the valuation, and we would request approval.
Okay, gentlemen?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Item number 19, Mr. Whiting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Young is going to handle this item for us. Okay, Mr. Young?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We've noticed a possible executive session if the board wants it, but it's discussion and possible action regarding payment of extra retirement benefits for FLSA exempt employees working overtime hours pursuant to third-party agreements. We, you have before you a draft policy which addresses this, and we'd recommend approval. Based on input from Supervisor Sims Hauser, I, he's requesting, and I think it's appropriate to add a caveat that the policy can, exemptions can be made by board approval. And given that modification, we'd recommend approval.
Okay.
A motion.
Gentlemen?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. Thank you, gentlemen. We're almost to the end. Mr. Patterson, item number 20?
Yes, Chairman, Members of the Board, this is the notification of the meetings where two or more members of the Apache County Board of Supervisors may be in attendance. We have listed there the ECO on January 16th at 3:00 PM at the CSA, then also CS, County Supervisor Association Legislative Reception on January 16th at 5:00 PM at the CSA building, and then the County Supervisor Association, January 17th at 10:00 AM at the CSA building.
Okay. Okay, the last item, gentlemen. Mr. Patterson, I didn't get no notices up here, anyone, about anybody wanting to address a particular, to adjust the board on any particular item presented. I don't know if you have any?
We do not have any, sir.
Okay. Given that, gentlemen, we don't have anyone wanting to come forward under item 21. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Shepard?
Yes, just on the public notice where two board members are to be in attendance, I don't know when specifically are the dates for Legislative Day and the new legislature going in. I'm planning to attend. I don't know a specific date, but I don't know if the supervisors are planning it. I don't know if we need to make public notification of that as well.
Okay, thank you for that particular point, Mr. Shepard. Mr. Patterson, maybe you can go ahead and make sure that the, the public is notified about supervisors coming together or going together to any particular event listed here.
Chairman, we will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, gentlemen, motion to adjourn?
Motion. Motion, our second?
Okay.
You get that, second?
Okay. Okay, um, um, gentlemen, I, late notice, I understand we have a gentleman here in our audience wanting to address the, the board on a particular item. So, with that, let me go ahead and hold the, the motion to, to adjourn in abeyance at this time, and go back to item number 21, under which Mr. Arben Mitchell is wanting to address this particular item before the board, if that's okay, gentlemen. I appreciate, appreciate that. So, given that, gentlemen, Mr. Arben Mitchell?
Yate. Good morning, Yate. Uh, good morning again, Board of Supervisors. Happy holidays, Happy New Years. I just came to briefly introduce myself. My name is Arben Mitchell. I'm the Tribal Partnership Specialist for the Bureau of Census. As we all know, every 10 years, there's a count of the United States population. So, that 10th year is coming up here shortly. And what I'm trying to do here with the nation, then also with the surrounding county, is establishing partnership, so we can have an accurate count of our nation's population. You know, this is very important. It redraws the districts, and, you know, redraws the districts for congressional, then also at the state level. And then, as government- Then, as government, we rely on a lot of these statistics that comes out of the count. So, I'm just briefly here to introduce myself to this body here, and later on, I'll be working with your, working more closely with your staff on how we can establish partnership. When I say partnership, I'm meaning to use your website for job announcements, for census information, and maybe use some of your facilities for testing site or for meeting site. So, with that, Shunai, Mr. Shirley, this will be my statement today.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Gentlemen, I don't know if anyone wants to address Mr. Mitchell on what he's presented. If not, we do have a motion to adjourn the particular, this meeting. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous that we go ahead and do that. So, with that, the Apache County Board of Supervisors' meeting is hereby adjourned.